Wait, wait till it dries out.
It's nice if you can dig them in the ground. Okay, we've been talking gardens. Must be a good year for them.
They're huge. I have three plants and one I put in last year.
Huge blossoms.
Tone blossoms.
Okay.
And then the one, two or the other.
Good evening.
Hi, Joel.
And to, to even have you sit here, what I can do is.
Hopefully it'll be short tonight.
It doesn't look too stressful anyway.
But the ones I did send email to everybody.
That's some zoning ordinance things to work on.
Just a hint. Hanging off the edge here.
Did his birthday?
That's all right.
Change.
The Star Wars.
See ya.
Hi.
Coming to our gem nick. Good evening.
Hi, good to see you again.
See you.
Yeah.
Interesting couple of months.
Do you have a name?
I think you seem like you're got a new mom.
You've been keeping busy. How long is he gonna be in?
Uh, we're in finals now. Finals, the playoffs actually.
Through back office work.
Still going lots.
Don't worry about it. We could play for fun, you know.
Well, he'd lose in Oklahoma.
Yes. Best new record.
How about climbing to do that zoom or you meet and drawings? It's the same people or do they get different people? It's all good. You know how you do zoom and then you mix it up. You think they play somewhere else? Now, this is it and they're just gonna dominate.
Well, it's always four or five teams that have been around for a while. They lost a player last week. It was Gary Power. It was one of their, one of their people.
Good for him. He was telling me all about the stuff in the military.
Losing one game last year, winning a whole league championship. I think I said something to Joe.
You went to Drexel or what'd you think of that? Did you like that?
Just like.
Did you do a call out? Who'd you do a call?
Call up and help with it.
What does it mean?
No, he was subbing here.
Oh, yeah.
It was rare. I managed three years part of the year.
Just three. Three or twenty-one?
I have twelve.
Twelve, so an opportunity.
You better have to be way chill. And it goes however whoever gets sixty dollars.
Yeah.
And with the playoffs are five.
So wait now, did that, did the other two lead up to the Toll Brothers, do you think?
Yeah. Now, what did you do? I played golf. I get down for it. But it was kind of, kind of hard for them to lose Gary because he was always one of the cutups.
So what would be, what did you like about the civil over the structural?
Very good.
All right, seven.
Just a good time. How about you? You stay local for the most part?
Lay out of the land. And then you start, because you didn't, did you even know about that one or you?
I remember.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September eighth meeting of the East Temple Township Planning Commission. Would invite you to join me in opening the meeting with pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, it seems that we have one of the regular members not in attendance, Mr. Palakowski. So I'm going to ask that Mr. Boltry serve as a voting member this evening. The first item on our agenda is approval of the minutes from our last meeting, which was way back in June.
I didn't have any corrections, so Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mrs. Byrne, that we approve the minutes as submitted for the June ninth meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed. So it would be six, six zero.
Six zero one correction.
Yeah, I guess Mr. Boltry would, would stay.
He was here, so I guess would be seven.
Did you vote? Did you? Oh, I'm, that's seven.
Seven.
Seven zero, then, yeah. All right, the action items for this evening, the first one is T L K Partners Sketch Plan and Land Development for Two Hundred Running Pump Road.
My name is Craig Deal and I'm the attorney for T L K Partners Incorporated. We had sought with Mr. Beck's assistance. We filed an application for consideration of a modification for the land and subdivision plan and also for the stormwater plan as a small project. So we have provided, I believe, the sketch of what had been provided to the zoning hearing board for the special exception and variances that had been approved. And we're here this evening for the planning commission's comments on any stormwater management or other issues that's pertinent to the application. As set forth on my application, there was a typographical error that I did bring to Mr. Beck's attention. It was in section four on appendix C. It should have been a letter D instead of a letter B for boy. But other than that, I believe my application does set forth our position that it would be a de minimis improvement of less than 5,000 square feet to the existing property. There's no phasing required, so this is installation of Padell Courts, which is something new to the United States. No permanent road improvements would be necessary for this small project. We do not anticipate any additional parking issues by the use of the courts because it will be only used by members of the existing tennis club. That's been in existence for decades. And it's no change of use and it's fairly consistent with what the property is, which I'm sure you're all familiar with it. Eight outdoor tennis courts and six indoor tennis courts. With that said, I do have Mr. Zink here, the owner of the corporation. Should you have any specific questions that I can't answer? So I'm all ears.
Okay. So what is Padell Court?
Dell Tennis Courts, actually, I can do a fairly decent job of that, but I will let Mr. Zink probably spell it out a little more specifically. So if you want to come up.
Padell is a European sport that we came in contact with. A good friend of mine became the president of Padell USA. It's basically, if you can think of tennis, squash, and maybe a little racquetball, all combined, it's an outdoor court. There's glass around the perimeter of the court and you can play off the deck, which off the ground or off the glass. It's actually more popular than tennis in, in Europe. So in Spain, it's really popular. Like.
And the surface is the same?
Surface is a, almost like a turf ground, like a, like a turf field. So it's a little, it's a little easier on the knees and, yeah.
So it is a pervious surface. It's a pervious surface?
Impervious.
It is impervious.
It is impervious.
So artificial turf.
Not so much necessarily for the planning commission, but certainly I think it's important to note that one of the concerns is if you compare the pickleball, the clacking sound that certainly neighbors associated or adjacent to the property certainly have issues with. Mr. Zink testified at the zoning hearing board that this is a more of a dead sound. It's probably less noise than an actual playing tennis outdoors. So it's just the type of the racket that's utilized with the sport and the type of the ball that's used versus a plastic ball.
Attorney Deal, could you, just for argument sake and make sure the planning commissioner are aware, could you go over what requests you presented the zoning hearing board and the, their decision?
Sure, thank you. We had applied actually for two separate items, a special exception and then for variance. Both of those were approved. Some of the concerns were certainly the parking that might be necessary to accommodate the Padell Courts. Certainly those comments were addressed. Mr. Zink again testified that he did not anticipate any additional traffic with the use of the Padell Courts. Again, this is solely for the use of the members of the club, so existing members of the club would be utilizing, you know, this particular sport or playing that particular sport. The other item was the variance. It was impervious and they were over already the existing ordinance. But what had, we had discovered was the installation of the Padell Courts increased the usage of the overall acreage by just one percent. They were already a fifty percent of impervious surface before we started. But again, as you know, the Lancaster or the Racket Club West, which is what it's still called today, has been there for probably over fifty years. I'd played there when I was a young person. And nothing has really changed. In fact, if you've gone over lately, it's unbelievable improvement. So certainly I think the neighbors are much more happier with what is transpiring now. The prior owner, older gentleman, no disrespect to him, but he let the club go. And now you go over it to repaint it. It's beautiful. It's active community, tennis community playing there and it's, I believe it's a, it's a great asset to the Lancaster community. Mr. Beck, I'm not sure if I addressed in detail enough your concern. I guess I'll open the questions if there isn't.
Guess we'll find out if you get any questions about the zoning.
Thank you.
So, questions?
I, I do have a question. How many members are at the racket?
Approximately four hundred.
What is the peak number of people that are there?
On a typical day? If you don't mind, again, I think it's more appropriate for Mr. Zink to answer that since he's there, dear.
So right now, I mean, so typical would be, let's, I mean, most of the time we're an indoor club. I mean, except for the four months of summer. So we have six courts, four people on a court. Let's assume that, you know, so I would say twenty-four people at a time on the, on the indoor tennis courts. Now, if we have an indoor, outdoor event, maybe could be more, but that doesn't happen that often. So I would say, and then we have a lot of junior stuff, little junior camps where kids just get dropped off and things like that.
After school?
After school, yes. Yeah.
Is there any other questions? There is another mic for me. You can, you can pull them out if you, if you need to.
I had a question. I, in terms of this, does this affect at all the light pollution in terms of neighbors?
Did you say late?
Light pollution, you know, outdoors, you know, at night.
No, I, that's a very good question. And again, the, the lights that are part of the court, which you would see and I'm not gonna see it on the sketch plan, but it was submitted. The overall composition and installation of the Padell Courts, it is lighted, but it's self-contained within this cubicle.
Do we know what kind of radius it has? I only say just because I live near like the stadium and, you know, football time.
We're talking the Padell Courts are something that would fit from yeah, so a lot of small, it's a lot smaller than a chess court. They really stay inside, the lighting stays inside, it doesn't radiate out. Really have changed, yeah, even for outdoors sports, it really changed in the last, I would say, five years where it really stays inside and doesn't radiate out for the reasons that you're speaking about, you know, bothering neighbors, you know, lighting up the community.
Okay.
Other thing, if you've been out to the club and it helps, I think, address your question, is there is a fairly large or large heightened hedge row behind the area where the courts would be built. So there is something that typically would, maybe we would see as a reasonable requirement is already there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
John or Cindy, I'm assuming there's no comments from the public on Zoom. Okay. Is there any further discussion from planning commission members?
What's up on the screen now is, is the court. And again, I would suggest to you probably from about that wall to about, to Brent would be, or Mr. Detter would be about the side.
And it's two courts, right?
Aesthetically, they're very, I mean, other people have commented, it just, it just looks nice. It's the one reason that we wanted to put him on that side of the tennis courts, not the other, because we really wanted people to see him. We think they're really nicely.
The glass provides some suppression of the noise?
Exactly.
Okay.
It does. One of the scratches maybe that type of racking and. So I would, I would probably say, I mean, it's, I don't think they ever.
Mr. Zink, we, we, we are on Zoom and.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, sorry.
We were, we used to record audio, which not a problem picking up, but with Zoom now, so thank you.
So I don't know if anybody's familiar, I think we have one at Tennis and Yacht Club. It's a, it's called platform tennis. There's one there. So a platform tennis is about, I would say, half the size of a tennis racket with holes in it, which also when you swing, it lets air go through. And then think of a, of, just of a dead tennis ball is the ball that we use. So it does deaden the sound, but it also adds a cool aspect that tennis doesn't have where you can play it off the glass. And what I love about the sport, not that I have to sell the sport to anybody, but what I love about the sport is that a tennis player that I think the barrier to entry is pretty hard in tennis, where the barrier to entry, I was out with a beginner last weekend ready, never played tennis a day of life, was able to play at the end of the night pretty successful, so it's pretty cool.
So the motion tonight is for waiving the land development requirement. Is that correct, Mr. Beck?
Because we don't act on the sketch plan.
Right.
If you're ready for a motion, I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we recommend to the supervisors waiver of the land development plan for the, this project, the scope of the project seems small enough and the impacts as well.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Detter, that we recommend approval of the modification to waive land development for the T L K Partners Skip, project at Two Hundred Running Pump Road. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Seven to zero, John.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Need us staying any longer?
If you want. Not unless you want to comment on the other two plans. Okay.
Yep. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is Lime Spring Square Phase Three and Six Final Plan.
Good evening, Claudia Shank from McNeese, Wallace and Newark, on behalf of Two O Six Roarstown Road. The plan that's before you this evening that's depicted on the screen shows the consolidation of two existing lots within Lime Spring Square. They were previously identified as lots two and twelve. They'd be consolidated into a single fifteen and a half acre lot roughly, and then ultimately three buildings would be constructed on those lots as depicted. Two of the buildings, the two smaller buildings, which I believe are fourteen and I can't read from this distance, but the two smaller buildings along Embassy Drive would both be medical office buildings. And then the larger building would be proposed for a warehouse facility. So in terms of the plan, we have received David Miller Associates' most recent review letter. There are nine modification or waiver requests associated with the project, which Dave Bitner from R G S is here and, and would be happy to walk you through any or all of them as you, as you see appropriate. Just two items that I would want to call to your attention specifically. The first would be relative to waiver request number nine. There's a waiver for the cover over the pipe that is located within a vehicular loading area. And the D M A had recommended that the waiver be granted provided that reinforced concrete pipe was provided in that location. My understanding is that Mr. Bitner had a conversation with David Miller Associates today, either with Mr. Ebersol or Mr. Hane, and it was agreed that a plastic pipe alternative would be acceptable in this case. So that condition would be modified. The other item I would bring to your attention is relative to the zoning comments. So this is outside of the modification section, but we are proposing more than a hundred and twenty-five percent of the parking that would be required for this use. That's based on the needs of the medical office tenant. They've indicated that that's the parking that they require for their use. That does serve a unique section of the zoning ordinance that talks about submitting data to the engineer regarding why the increase in parking is necessary. And then ultimately, the engineer reviews and the board of supervisors acts on that request for a modification essentially. So I think we would also, although it doesn't, specifically the ordinance doesn't discuss the planning commission's role in that modification request, I think we would also ask the, the planning commission to make a favorable recommendation with regard to the parking modification as well. So we are happy to walk you through the waiver request if we, if you would like, if there are specific questions you have about any of them, we can talk through those as well, but we are seeking your recommendation of approval this evening.
It might be helpful if you would talk about, I think there's four, four or five that have to do with street trees and buffering and things like that. Maybe you just describe the portions that you're asking for.
And those sections. Yeah, the, the first one is street tree spacing, spacing, section two sixty-five, A seven, G two, C. They use this thing. If you could zoom out on that a little bit, John. So that pertains to the street trees out along Embassy Drive due to some easements that we have along there, we couldn't maintain the spacing along the frontage of the property. So essentially we got what we could in there and then whatever trees were required along there, they're provided elsewhere within the parking lot, which I think most of them are over in this area. So the, the correct number of trees are provided, we're just providing them in other places because of the, because of the easements that are along Embassy Drive. And there's a stormwater easement there, there's a bypass pipe that brings water from the south side of Embassy Drive across. And then there was originally a swell designed there. But as part of this plan, the, the building is put over top where the swell was, so we've had to provide a large bypass pipe that comes around and discharged directly to the, to the flood plain. So that's the reason why there's, there's an easement along Embassy Drive. The other three, they're all pretty similar, have to do with the buffer plantings, buffer planning strip A, B and C. And that is along this property line between the current L F F C building and the warehouse building. There's, the zoning line is right along here, so there's a buffer required there and then a buffer required right here between these two zoning boundaries. So the, the modification is for, we still provide the buffer per the zoning ordinance. The modification is for an alternative planting, which the, the subdivision land development ordinance allows. So essentially, like in this area right here, there's a stormwater management facility and, and partially flood plain easement. So we don't have the, the space to get the plantings in there, so we're asking for an alternative planting design there. Same thing along here. There's an access drive here and an access drive here where we can't get the, the correct number and types of plants, or not types, but the correct number of plantings across that, that entire buffer, so we're just asking for the modification to provide an alternative planting plan. I think that was all the.
Can you tell me about request number eight, the driveways? Two driveways versus three, or three driveways versus two?
So this is hard to see on here, but we have a driveway here and a driveway here. And there was, and also a driveway right here, which was installed as part of the Lancaster Farm Fresh. So this driveway is to provide access back to this building. And then we have the two driveways, one here and one here to provide access to this building. So the ordinance only allows two access points onto a lot. In this case, if we're just looking at these two buildings, we have the two access points to get to those. And then we have a separate one that was already there to combine driveway between L F F C and the warehouse.
So that, since you combined the two lots, that came.
Right, right, before this was its own, this was on its own lot, so we were able to provide separate access. But now they're combined and we don't want to mix this traffic because this is going to be trucks coming into here. We don't want to mix that, that traffic with the, the traffic that's coming into the medical office buildings.
How about this, what it looks like a second driveway to the warehouse on the west side?
I mean, this is the driveway off Embassy Drive. And then there's an access point here that would get to just the parking lot.
Right.
And then this access drive will be for where the trucks come back to, to the docks.
And then those trucks come through the Lancaster Farm Fresh.
Yeah, there's access, so they'd come in this way and then back along the back of Lancaster Farm Fresh. There's a shared access drive between those two.
But they would not come out through the parking for Farm Fresh?
No, no, the parking for Farm Fresh is here.
Yeah.
There's a grass strip here and then the parking's next to that, so they're, they're separated.
Okay, I couldn't quite see where the parking from Farm Fresh goes to the access drive. Or does that come straight to Embassy? So parking is accessed from that shared drive? Not from Embassy?
Correct.
Guess a question on number nine then, if the wording is to be changed from R C P, what should it be changed to? So we.
Nick.
So I think on that one, I think, Dave, you already provided, I think, some of the spec sheets for it. So on that one, I'm thinking it would just be granted with the condition that the applicant can provide the specifications from the pipe manufacturer that it can withstand the loading where it is basically, which I think we have. It was still just left that we thought it should be concrete, but then we had that discussion and it appeared to be fine. And it's on A D S's spec sheets that it can handle what they're proposing. So basically granted with the condition that the pipe be the smooth line core gay plastic with manufacturer specification provide.
So S L C P P?
That's still what you're proposing.
That's what we have on our plan, yeah. I, I think just plastic pipe is probably.
Yeah.
Okay. I was gonna suggest maybe just R C P or plastic pipe with, that meets equivalent specifications or something like that.
It's fair, yeah. Achieving both.
Yep. Yep.
Am I seeing that correctly, that all the truck parking has to do a three or five-point turn to exit?
Yes. Yeah, you're talking about, talking about back here. Yeah, so we have to determine turning movements for that, but yeah, I mean, to get back into these spaces, they have to do. And I'm not sure what it is. I don't have those turning movements, but they can get back into there and get out.
And as we go into the comments from David Miller, is there anything there that you can't comply with or disagree with?
Yeah, we've reviewed those and.
You're okay with everything? Do we have further questions for the applicant? And I believe, if I'm correct, all the modifications are recommended to be granted, actually without conditions.
Nine would have condition.
Pardon?
Nine would be.
With condition. Okay. So we could take them as a group, or we could take eight plus one, however you want to do it.
Because we're going to make a recommendation on the parking as well, the item under zoning, because they're providing more parking. It's not a formal recommendation, but they would just like, I mean, it's not a formal modification, but they would like just our support of that for board of supervisors.
Okay, so the modifications are eight plus one, right? Okay. So if somebody would like to make a motion, however you choose.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we recommend to the supervisors approval of the first eight modifications and conditional approval of what is listed as modification number nine with the condition that the pipe be plastic pipe that meets the engineer's specifications.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mrs. Byrne, that we recommend approval of modifications one through eight and conditional approval of modification nine, subject to the condition that the plastic pipe must meet the requirements, the engineering specifications. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So that would be unanimous, John.
I don't know how we want to do the zoning thing, whether we want to include that with the plan approval or a separate item specifically. What do you recommend, John?
I recommend it be a separate, separate action, because it will be a separate action by the board.
So I'll make a motion that we recommend to the supervisors approval of the zoning request specific to allowing the over 125% parking based on the use of the property and the needs of those tenants or owners moving in.
I'll second that. Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Deter, that we recommend approval of zoning of variance or modification allowing for parking in excess of 125% of the recommendation, provided it's backed up with the client's data. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? That would be seven to zero as well. And then the plan itself. This would be for the final plan for phases three and six.
I wish they could make the warehouse smaller to go around, but I know everyone wants a bigger warehouse, so I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of the final plan. That supervisors approve the final plan.
Subject.
Subject to staff and engineer comments, thank you.
If you're done, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mrs. Byrne, that we recommend approval of the final plan for Lime Spring Square Phase Three and Phase Six, subject to staff and engineers' comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That would be seven to zero as well. All right, we have a representative from the applicant for zoning map amendment.
You want to tag team this one? Mr. Beck? I mean, it was, it was pretty much, this is a request from the supervisors and DMA assisted staff in preparing the exhibit. So you want to tag team this with me?
We're the supervisors. We're the supervisors.
Yeah, you could, you could sit there, you can go up, just have a mic. So before the planning commission tonight is a zoning map amendment proposed for the property off of Nisley Road. It's right across from the church, Turkey Hill, and in a butts, the Four Seasons Golf Course. If you might, if you may recall, it used to have a house on it. The house has been razed. So now, one of the township employees used to live there. It's no longer there. They're using it for, I think they're composting, I don't know. I'm not quite sure. The other property, and let me see if I can get this a little bigger. Coming up on that address was a little difficult, because it goes back. The second property is just to the south. It's 4.9 acres, and it's identified as simply Stony Battery Road. So that goes to show you how old the property is, how far back the subdivision goes, because it's still identified as Stony Battery Road property. So currently, those properties are in the RL zone or low-density residential zone. And in an effort to preserve open space in township, the township is proposing to rezone these properties from RL to recreation and open space, being consistent with the zoning for the golf course. And this exhibit, if my computer cooperates, this is the current zoning for the properties, and then this is what the proposed zoning would be. So considering that the golf course is adjacent, there's no spot zoning issues. And this does, like I said, allow the township to preserve some existing open space.
And the township owns it?
That is correct.
Rezoning somebody else's land.
That is correct. Right now, portions of the property are being leased out for farming. But other than that, there's no other activities.
John, you mentioned that it's not spot zoning, because it's adjacent to the golf course. But on the other hand, we're creating a little island there with those two properties that front Nisley Road. I'm just wondering, is there a real big reason to zone that flag lot, open space?
It is pretty much undevelopable. It's wetlands and other, there's other environmental concerns that would preclude it from being developed. So turning it into open space is the best course of action for that property.
Is there any implication tax-wise for either zone?
Whether it be recreation, open space, or low-density residential, it has to meet certain requirements to get, to meet clean and green. And I believe, I believe we did get this property in clean and green, but I'm not sure about this one.
It is in clean and green, both parcels.
Thank you, Cindy. Both properties are in the clean and green. So that means they are at a reduced tax rate.
Any thoughts?
I mean, I wouldn't want to vote against creating recreation.
That's good to know.
Combining lots?
It was mentioned, but at this point in time, it's just looking at rezoning.
Does the existing stuff, street there, function okay as it is now?
It is not, I don't believe. Cindy, do you know if that's where the farmer accesses the site off of Nisley or off of Centerville Road?
I believe that it's pretty much overgrown. There is no access point there. I think he accesses further down on Nisley.
Where, kind of where crosses are right across from Hurt Side?
Yes.
What I'm asking about is the one that comes from the residential development there?
That's cloud.
You're talking right here?
No.
The street that's.
Does it have a bulb? Does it function correctly?
That was, that was prior to any current subdivision land development that would have required some form of cul-de-sac, whether it be a hammerhead, whether it be a bulb. Years ago, I think it was, Cindy, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was discussed maybe back in 2005, 2006 to sell these properties off to developer for residential development under the intention of the township doing a stormwater facility on this lot. That never came to fruition, and one of the reasons to rezone it to recreation open spaces to prevent any discussion or any future board from selling the properties off for development.
It is likely that you will see a retention basin in both parcels.
And as Cindy said, we're looking at all options for stormwater management. And it just, it makes sense to look at township-owned properties and water flows this way. So it makes sense to get at the headwaters into the golf course before it makes it into the culvert and then over, over to the Hart property and the downstream developments.
Yeah, I did see with Tropical Storm Ida, that the whole golf course was pretty much inundated there, coming off of this property.
Yeah, that's his.
John, are those the two that Frank Provanzo wanted to develop?
I don't know.
I think they are.
That was, that was before my timing. I was still in college at that time. It doesn't sound that old, because I.
We happen to be friends with him, they bought you together.
You guys have any plans for this, right? Just keeping an open space for any future things that may come up?
Just for Zoom and for recording, Mr. Rush asked if the township has any plans, development-wise, or anything else for these two properties, other than stormwater management? Mr. Rush, no.
I think Mr. Boltly brought up a good point, though. If the township would like to help the snowplows and so forth, maybe they should consider putting a little return or bulb on the end of that cul-de-sac.
At the end of that, isn't there?
If you bear with me, I might be able to bring up a.
I'm almost positive there is. It may not be 80 feet across, but I'm pretty sure there's one back there. It may even be on the township property.
You can see, you can barely see on the, there is a bulb in there.
It doesn't just dead-end there.
Brent, are you familiar with this area?
I may have been back there once or twice.
So that bulb probably has temporary easements on those.
Yeah, for the properties, I guess.
Probably.
I doubt it. I doubt it. I bet if we look at the plan, it still goes, it's still, I mean, property lines, I mean, it's right-of-way.
Yeah, a lot of times when we design them, we'll put a temporary easement on the bulbs, and then it'll be vacated at some point where it's extended.
Correct, yeah, exactly. I doubt that this was, that was the case with these. I have no idea. I would venture to guess that the plan was probably from the late 70s, early 80s. And they probably didn't have any intention of extending all the development.
Anybody else have any further questions or comments, or are we ready for a motion? I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we recommend approval, recommend rezoning from low-density residential RL to recreation open space zone for the 918 Nisley Road property and the Stony Battery Road property.
I'll second.
Hey, we have a motion by Mr. Deter, seconded by Mrs. Will, that we recommend approval of the rezoning request for 918 Nisley Road and Stony Battery Road from low-density residential to recreation open space. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? Motion unanimous, seven, zero. For the vote is unanimous. Is there any old business, Mr. Beck?
No, sir.
New business, Belco Community Credit Final Plan on Centerville Road.
We have a one plan to introduce, the Belco Community Credit Union Final Plan. It's on a, proposed for a vacant lot next to that fish place on Centerville Road.
They haven't been in with anything on that yet? Haven't we seen something?
They came in for a sketch plan and a waiver of preliminary plan.
Okay. Yeah, we saw it.
And that was, I believe, back in May.
All right, next item would be project reports.
Oh, is it at least good to have a planning commission meeting? We haven't had one for two months. And culmination of Lime Spring Square, this is the last lot, the last two lots that are left to be developed. I'm happy to report that the Homestead, let me refer, the Farmstead at Homestead Village plans, if you may recall, they had two plans. One for a revised final plan for the clubhouse that is existing and going to be razed and rebuilt. And then a lot consolidation plan for the Farmstead at Lime Spring Square. Those plans have been recorded. Additionally, 791 Stony Battery Road was recorded today as well. So the construction is underway for 701. They did have an issue with some sinkholes last week. I think those have been addressed. And we anticipate that they would begin construction on 791 in the very near future. Construction, for the most part, is done at 601. We're just waiting for word from the new owners about an end. Construction, for the most part, is done at six oh one. We're just waiting for word from the new owners about an end user. For Brookside and Penn State Health, things continue to move along rather quickly and it's pretty, pretty darn efficient. State Road is completely open. We had some issues that we corrected with Penn dot as far as line striping and everything from Ersberg Pike North through the interchange. Sheets has received their temporary CO and will have their opening tomorrow. So we're still waiting on to hear what's going on with phase six. That plan has still not been recorded. Construction for State Road Commerce Park to the north is underway for seven eleven. Pretty much they're focusing on site work at this point. I don't believe we've even seen a building permit or building plans for seven eleven at this point. The developers having issues with the car wash. They're still looking for another user for lot one, which would be to the north of the seven eleven. For the most part, I hate to say, things are pretty quiet. And I think it's evident by the fact that we haven't had a planning commission for two months. So I'm not sure if this is a byproduct of the economy or COVID or anything like that, or maybe better yet, the fact that East Temfield Township is nearing the end of developable land.
Yeah, when you look back at what's gone on in the last four years or something like that, it's it's huge amount of things that have been put in place here. So I don't know where you get that much more land.
Well, there is some developable land. The problem is being able to get it away from the current owners. And I, the largest tract of land, the last we heard, I should say, the two largest tracts of land that are left in the develop, developable area, the Hershey Farm and the Crider Farm. Second generation, third generation, fourth, whatever Dwight, you would probably know better than we would. Have no desire to sell the land off for development. I mean, the Crider family owns over two hundred and twenty acres of prime real estate between Ersberg Pike and two eighty three. And I know Mr. Crider just passed away not too long ago, but I don't, I don't see his sons, sons, sons or anybody else selling it.
Just curiosity, I read the paper today. I think they were talking about the the new prison prop property they're talking. Was that a Crider property too? And I was just, I was just curious if there was some relation there.
No, they're not related. That's Clyde Crider, but not the Clyde Crider in East Temple.
Okay.
Clyde Crider from the Manor.
I just thought that would be a long place to have property.
Clyde Crider from the Manor. And he owns a Crider mulch, big mulch business.
I will say it's been quiet up until this point. That could change in the next few weeks because we're meeting with a couple developers for two projects. Can't go into any details at this point, but if they come to fruition, there's some development that will occur.
I thought kind of tagging on what you're saying, we're kind of maybe reaching the end of new development. And with that, kind of, this is just something that stuck out to me reviewing the the tennis court project and the Lime Spring side by side, how you know, they're making, it's an entrepreneur, relatively small business, making some improvements to an outdated property. And it seems like they did kind of have to jump through a lot of hoops to get to, I guess, talking about the impervious coverage where like Lime Spring, they're allowed sixty percent, right? Because they're in that regionals.
They are, they are allowed a lot more impervious coverage than a residential, residentially zoned property.
Just my thought, looking at these two, I certainly am not a fan of increasing impervious. But maybe as we look at new development, I don't know, trying to keep a fair playing field for everybody. Because, you know, he was in here, small business owner, trying to improve his property, jumping through hoops to get something that's allowed by right in a different zone, which maybe I mean, not a real solution, but maybe in the future, there's maybe a more equitable way to.
Well, if I may, he had to jump through one large hoop. He got a, he got a waiver of land development. If he had to go through land development, it would have been more costly. So fortunate for him, his stormwater management that he's adding, he doesn't even have to do an engineered plan for it. So there, there, we did kind of relax the standards for him. So even though, even though him coming in here and talking to compared to what he would have to do for land development and how much money he would have to spend. I mean, at this point, he's spending money on an attorney, not an engineer, which, I mean, yeah, an attorney is not cheap, but.
I get that too. But I think, you know, for ending development, maybe just thinking of ways because he's an entrepreneur wanting to improve an existing property that had been kind of dated for a while.
No, I, I.
For a future.
I completely understand your point and I just want to reiterate.
I don't think anything was wrong with either plan.
We've actually taken steps here in East Temfield Township and you can ask developers. We are one of the most development friendly townships, not in Lancaster County, in central PA. We've instituted the sketch plan process to help streamline that. So we have done things to help especially with existing property owners that are looking to either redevelop or reinvest in their property. But I appreciate the comment and just so you're aware, that was one of the board goals in the comp plan is to they knew within, that was approved in twenty sixteen. It's already been five years. They knew within five to ten years, the township would be looking at being built out. And the focus would then have to shift to reinvestment in existing properties and redevelopment. So absolutely, Mrs. Will, we are looking at it and we will, we will continue to look at ways to help property owners reinvest in their property.
Curious question on the sheets. Do you know, is that going to be open twenty four seven?
I would imagine it would be, but I cannot confirm that. Mr. Rohr.
I ran into an odd thing last night. Somebody ran out of gas at ten ten in front of my house.
Did you get a lottery ticket?
Their car blocked the road. They were pulled blocking both lanes. My gas can was empty, so I drove to Turkey Hill over here. It was closed. I drove to Turkey Hill over here. It was closed. So I drove to Mount Joy, Sheetz.
Sheetz. Apps.
Like eleven fifteen.
I'll tell you this, driving by it, it does not resemble any sheets that I'm familiar with. And I was, I remember the first couple of sheets that were built in York. This is actually kind of small compared to the other ones that they're building. I mean, I think they only have four fuel pumps.
Really?
Yeah. No, four pumps.
Here?
Yeah.
But they got the drive through for the food though. Yeah, we're big on that now.
I mean, we have seven eleven, we have Turkey, Turkey Hill. I think Sheetz understands the fact that they may not be the first choice for gasoline and that's not where they make their money. They make their money off of other things that's that are sold there.
John, what's the status on Lidl?
Which part?
This parking and the driveway.
Our traffic engineer, we did get a post development traffic study. Our traffic engineer, Grove Miller, Jay States from Grove Miller, the recommendation is that they need to do some improvements to the intersection there where the driveway is and Columbia Avenue to, instead of striping it, they need to put in basically a pork chop or a concrete island.
They had put cones.
Yeah.
And all of a sudden people realized they weren't supposed to go straight zooming right up there.
Yeah, he said that if it continues to be a problem, then the next step would have to be to talk to Penn dot because it is a Penn dot. Penn dot Road and a Penn dot HOP for their access.
Yeah, yeah.
But yes, yeah.
And we're still moving forward?
Yes.
So they would still have to go to Penn dot to put a pork chop in. Anything, do anything in that.
Yes, that's correct. We're also dealing with a lighting complaint. Their photometric plan, even though it appears that they're, they meet the requirements for lighting, then the neighbor, the one neighbor is beyond frustrated because they obviously are there's more candela in their lights. Because we measure by lumens and I've, I've done a lot of research on lights and LEDs. And yeah, lumens is one part of it. But when you start looking at candela and that's the, that's like the ability for the light, how far the light will reach. The lumens is how bright it is and then the candela is that power. And yeah, yeah, it may be coming over at point three lumens, but point three lumens, how far? And it's really affecting some of the neighboring properties.
Yeah, I know which ones you're talking about.
I feel, I feel for him because if I, if I, I would have been.
It's scaring the ferals in his backyard.
I don't know if I would send that problem.
And one other.
I got, I got another way of scaring them.
I think this one's for Cindy. Bachi finals playoffs start on Monday. And I know I'm going to get some questions. What do we hear about the new Bachi Court? Anything?
At this point, the grant's been submitted the third time. Hopefully the third time's a charm. We won't hear from that until sometime this fall.
Okay.
If we got the grant.
Okay.
They seem positive. They never had a third time turned down, but I guess there's a first time for everything.
Well, let's hope. We really need to put them out here.
I will let you know as soon as I hear something.
Oh, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Sure.
And I invite everyone to come, starting the next Tuesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, starting at six o'clock. It will be the last eight teams going for the championship, which will be held on Monday, the twentieth. So everyone is welcome to come out and watch some really high grade Bachi playing.
Are you one of the eight?
Huh?
Or the Burns, one of the eight?
We're like eight, eighteen we play for fun. We've got a bunch of old people.
John and Cindy, I'm assuming there's nobody on Zoom that has any public comment.
Cindy's the last person on Zoom other than.
Yeah, that's why I see Cindy and you. Okay, there's no further. Yes, nothing further to come before the mission meeting.
We will be having an October meeting and and we will be having in November. We have things in the queue, not necessarily development, but that will require planning commission action. Jim, I apologize. Jim, I apologize. Did you adjourn?
Yeah, I did. Break the handle. The one right off of Centerville Road and. No, Marietta Pike and Running Pump right here. Well, yeah, it does go up to Centerville. You're right. Whatever happened? Nice meeting you too. Nothing. Does he still have, did he own it outright or did he have an agreement?
And when he talks to us, he's still. And not to mention, you're running right up to Penn Town right away and I mean, with ten years. I saw it on some of the plan, the studies they did, that's where I saw it and, you know, and this helps me. It's about where you're developing. Where's all that traffic? They've been walking around some more. It's, they've been walking by us more. And um, which regardless, I, I would see more. But if they're, if they're gonna spend, especially some of those questions. That makes sense. Romans about future. Basically slip right off. Into. Okay, something's gonna be. These traps are right there. A lot of. Everything. No, because you never do this for. They're changing. It's between Warroad and um, Canal. And uh, there's so much stuff for that. That they're. A lot. Not the Polish. Though at least there's some. Well, that Warroad and. Big. It's the, the. What's the, the Mary? Yeah, Road has to be. Yeah, um. Have to blow off the entire. It would be Penn Dot. It would be Penn Dot and uh, only that. We're doing a purpose. But no, you're not. Pick outside box. Have to get everything here. That, right. All the years. And the. Uh, there's. Happen. Yep. But then you would have. Exactly. I, I, I don't know if I have not. I mean, people do. We're going to. I haven't been on that one. It's all about, like, I don't know, but. That's what we. Because. Yeah, that's what they're. It's already getting used to it. Well, they have a, they just, they just still work on that, but that's what it is. So they're pretty much wrapping up. We'll see how that. And it's. Besides. Twenty-five years.
All right, have a good evening.
All right, you too. Hey, if you ever have any questions about anything.
I appreciate you. I, you know, I'm just getting my seal.
I'm glad, I, I'm glad you walked out of, you emailed me. I've heard you at the board than people like this. Lot, lot of time. Absolutely. So if I, if I'm able to answer the question, or better yet, if there's something that we have to comment about.
You know, like I get some history that I otherwise I wasn't able to show up at.
Yeah, no, it's, it's one of those things where um, I think they were great questions because. Don't know.
Yep. All right, have a good night.